With all due order, the Iron Mountain City Council on October 3rd, 2016 at 6:30, please rise for the presentation of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All please.
Member Molly?
Here.
Liz?
Here.
Reebord?
Here.
Allison Reed?
Here.
Stoll?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Luke Quest?
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda, any conditions? No? Motion.
So.
Okay, motion's court. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Okay, approval of the minutes for the meeting of September 19th, regular meeting. Any changes, mistakes?
We approve of that for the regular meeting of September 19th, 2016.
Motion's court, any further? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Okay, all the comment, any other questions at this time? Please state your name and address and your findings.
Brian Spiester, Great Lakes County, Michigan. Uh, I want to talk about the charter amendment, clause 1, uh, for the city of Iron Mountain. Uh, I've been involved locally, I was a councilman in the city of Kingsford, we have our own action committee, uh, CVC of Dickinson County, and I get into the nuts and bolts of the Civil Service Commission. Uh, I would have to say that, uh, I agree with, uh, Mattson, your chief police, that this is a vote yes on this is good for the city of Iron Mountain. Like I said, I get into the nuts and bolts of it, it's complicated, the average person doesn't understand it, and, uh, I've taken the time to look into it, uh, and I don't think the average person knows the power that the Civil Service Commission has over this body. You know, you people don't pick who your chief of police is, you don't pick who gets hired, the Civil Service Commission does. You might pick who's on the commission, that's about as close. And a vote yes for the Civil Service Commission is good for the city of Iron Mountain, and like I said, CVC of Dickinson County supports it, uh, your chief police supports it, and looking at your, uh, knowledge list, Reebord, Stoll, and Luke Quest, looks like you guys supported it, Reebord moved into motion, this is good for everybody, and like I said, the average person doesn't understand the Civil Service Commission, we go to our webpage, we tried to get into some of the law, but vote yes is to amend the city, uh, charter, to, uh, to show the city, the Iron Mountain Charter be amended to eliminate the civil service system by repealing section 7.11, vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Black, 136, West Kentucky, Florida, I'm here representing the tree board. Uh, if, if you've noticed over the last few years, we've successfully planted, uh, probably 75 variety trees, uh, in the city, but the DPW worked and, uh, a lot of the, a lot of the trees go on, uh, the boulevard of private property owners, but, uh, we've also put quite a few in the, uh, parks, playgrounds, and I'm here to request that, uh, we've done, the city has done eight trees of the ones that we planted the last couple of years, and I'm wondering if you would increase that to 10, but I also have to tell you that the price of our trees, uh, is, will be higher this year. Uh, we've been trying to offer them a very reasonable price to the, everybody, and we have had grant money, the, uh, DPW grant, which we got last year, or DPW, I'm sorry, DTE grant that we had last year, uh, is in every other year's grant, so we probably will not be getting grant money this year, so we would, uh, ask you to, uh, bear with us as we increase price, we're not sure, it'll probably be between 150 and 170 dollars per tree, uh, this coming year. If we provide water bags last year, they seem to be well accepted, and if we have a dry year, they'd be very needed, uh, in addition to the motion and everything. So, if you would, please consider, uh, increasing, uh, the number, of the number of trees and also, uh, the, uh, incur, what, what trees, thank you.
Thank you. If I could, I would just like to say thanks for what you've done on each side, there's six brand new cheap trees that have gone in there, just in a couple blocks around where I, where I'm living, and they're nice.
The trees were very nice this year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Close public comment, business man. Okay, approval of the group participation for your health care savings plan?
Uh, this is something, uh, introduced in the last couple of years through MERS, and what it is, and we, the first person that took advantage of this was our, uh, was former chief finance officer, Carol Bartomeoli. Uh, they have a program which allows you to take, uh, sick leave payout or anything that your final paycheck, and, uh, place it tax-free into a health savings program that you can use then tax-free to cover medical expenses in retirement. Uh, so that's where it benefits the employee, is that they can use that money, they put it in tax-free, and they can use it tax-free for any health costs. Where it benefits the city is, we don't have to pay our portion of social security and Medicare if we deposit their sick leave payout into this program, so we save 7.65% on, on the money also as part of the payout. You have to make windows for each individual employees, and that's how it has to work, and that's why the last time we did, chief finance officers had, uh, started, or were hired prior to a certain date, so this, um, that's not the right one that's in here, it shouldn't say director of public works, it shouldn't say DPW supervisor, so the resolution is part of whatever motion, let's make sure it says DPW supervisor, does it on here?
Yes.
Oh, she changed, okay, it's, it's the memo that didn't get changed and that I have on page two. As long as, I, I know she corrected the resolution, as long as that's correct, okay, we're good there then. Um, so what we need is the, uh, agreement approved that's attached, and also the resolution, and the resolution and the agreement say what I just told you.
So, you're making a motion to okay that?
The agreement and the resolution.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I should say this one.
Yeah, it says it doesn't cause, you're taking, you're taking tax dollars, federal tax dollars, it doesn't cost the city anymore, it doesn't cost the employee anymore.
That's good.
My second.
Okay, any further discussion? No? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Okay, approval of pay request for Great Lakes, um, TV Seal, Inc.
They, uh, part of our SAW grant, uh, a, a big portion of the SAW grant was the cleaning and televising of all the sewer lines. Uh, we awarded sometime ago, uh, Great Lakes TV and Seal with that job, uh, this is their first pay request.
All summer, right?
Yeah, uh, this is the first pay request they've made, uh, you see the footage that they've done, and the heavy cleaning hours that they have on there. Uh, this was, uh, sent to me by our, uh, engineer consultant on the job, Scott Nowak with Coleman, um, he reviewed it and agreed it should be paid, uh, eighty-six thousand three hundred forty dollars and fifty-four cents. We'll re, be reimbursed for 90% of that cost, so our cost is only going to be eight thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
So they're going to take care of the heavy cleaning also, the grant well?
It takes care of all, yeah.
There's so much, right, but we need more?
There's, there was so much budgeted, but there's also like an unallocated budgeted amount in the SAW grant that you can draw from if there's extra things you want to do. Um, and when they're finished here, there should be another pay request coming, because this was through August 31st, and I know they did a lot of work in September. Uh, I think they just wrapped it up last week, actually, so we'll, we'll see where it's at, compare to the budget, and then, uh, we'll go from there.
Yeah, this is pay request number two.
Is it on there?
Yeah, but, um...
If, if it is, I don't remember paying another.
I don't remember paying another.
It's kind of track them with the grant and everything, so I don't remember paying another one.
This one's only, work completed August 1st through August 31st, and you've been here since, what, me?
Well, the, well, they had something wrong with their computer system, and I think, I, it seems like there's more than that here. There is some trying to be figured out as far as where, where they're at with everything. This, I mean, it, it, this is good, build stuff that needs to be built. I, there was a attachment to this that had every single street that they did.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't, this isn't what we're paying off of, the engineer actually sent over, uh, six pages that showed every street and what sections were done, because the engineers originally gave them all the sections that needed to be done, and then they get back which ones they did, and they're keeping track of that stuff for us.
Okay, so we make the motion, we should make it a pay request number two?
Yeah, it does say pay request number two.
Okay, all right. Which pleasure, board?
Uh, who, um, it says that, um, the SAW grant would reimburse us, what is that?
This is state.
It's a state?
They have DQ.
Oh, DQ?
They have DQ. Our SAW grant's worth about seven hundred some thousand dollars.
I think we got this before, uh, she, uh...
It was two years ago?
Yeah, she, yeah, we got this before you got on the board. Need a motion to, uh, okay, pay request number two.
So move.
Court, anybody? Court. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Okay, bid award for the haul truck?
Uh, the two lowest responsible bids were very close. Um, UP Truck Center had Western Star 4700 SF with an Olson body, it was a hundred and forty-four thousand, one forty-one, which included thirty-five hundred dollars on the trade-in. Uh, Truck Country Freightliner 114 SD with a Monroe body was a hundred and forty-four two oh seven, and included three thousand dollars for a trade-in. Uh, so they reviewed them, both had pluses and minuses, um, but the, uh, the, the low bid that met the spec of the city was the Western Star for a hundred and forty-four one forty-one. With that, they had an option to, um, to switch the front plow hitch and the underbody scraper to a hanky brand, which saved it, will save an additional eighteen hundred and nineteen dollars, and, uh, they checked into that, and it seems like a good option for the price savings, it's universal with the different parts that would be put on it, so it'd actually take the, uh, plow truck award to a hundred and forty-two three twenty-two. We had budgeted one sixty for this, so that's a good thing, money that we can put towards other equipment that we need to buy.
Good.
Okay, John, who checks these out?
Our mechanic, both of them are mechanics.
Yeah.
Our working foreman mechanic, and then the mechanic, I don't know what their actual name is, one's a, one's a department, the, the motor pool working foreman, and then we have a mechanic too.
Make a motion to approve of it, the UP Truck Center for a hundred and forty-two three twenty-two. Court. Okay, any motion's court, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Okay, financial reports, none. City manager report?
Uh, dear management, we were at 11, um, when I wrote this last Friday, which would have been the last day of the crop damage permits, so we switched on October 1st, we had, uh, 20 available for the hunters that were participating on Friday coming to pick up, which they would have been able to use starting that Saturday, and, uh, they're out there right now, I don't know how many have been taken of, but, uh, we'll keep an update on here. Um, the essential error service, I just attached that for review in case you felt strongly either way, um, the one part that I noticed myself that was sort of interesting is the Sky West, which currently operates, put in a proposal, and I think they added Detroit, because right now it doesn't go to Detroit, but the other one proposal uses a nine-seat plane. I, yeah, I had, I, I guess I didn't copy the picture and put it in there, but it was, it's a front propeller, nine-seat plane.
A front, no.
A front propeller, not even a two on the side.
It's not a dual propeller?
Nope, one center front propeller, it takes nine people.
Center, it's a starter.
Was that, was that?
There's no way, you have to wear one of those scarves and goggles.
I assume you read there.
I think it's what Ironwood has, the company that's flying out of Ironwood, so, uh, the inside looked nice, I mean, as far as the seats, it looked like there was a lot of space, but it was a nine-seater, so I don't know how that will work, but that's why...
But one engine on an airplane is good, two better.
I prefer even less.
So if, if, you know...
Do you know when they go to Chicago, though?
It was one would go to Chicago, and they would fly somewhere else, too, I think they were flying two spots.
It's good to go to Chicago, because now you go to Minneapolis, and you've got to fly from Minneapolis down.
Yeah, and, and I think Sky West was looking at adding Detroit for two of the flights, or one flight a day or something like that on there. I, I agree with it, uh, you know, you can comment directly if you want, through the contact in here, this Albert Meldoon, they're looking for feedback, uh, I think it was by, I don't remember what day they were looking, October 26th? October 26th, so between now and the next meeting, if you guys feel really strongly about supporting one program or the other, let me know, we can do something from the city, but I want to at least get the, get this team seated, and, uh, oh, here it is, Sky West would do seven non-stops, non-stop round trips to MSP and six non-stop round trips to Detroit, which I guess would be different from what they're doing now.
Would we be better to look at this across the entire county, as far as the, uh, jurisdictions in the county?
They send it to everybody.
Well, I, what I'm, my question is, to go forward with one response from all versus each individual?
Well, if, I mean, if we can all get that...
I was wondering, is it, would we be better off as a, a county community to do that than?
Individual, potentially, unless you all end up with the same, or end up, um, I'm just trying to find that. The other one?
Yeah.
Oh, Air Choice, they would do, uh, 18 non-stop round trips to MSP and 13 non-stop round trips to Chicago, but they're doing a nine-seater versus a 50-seater, so I don't know, I would think you're still quite a few seats down.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we do a survey on the website?
You mean, does the citizens have a right to, to voice your opinion on this?
I think it's generally with the county, I mean...
I know it is, but, um, I'm just wondering if the citizens have a right to say something, because a lot of them fly, and maybe most of them fly to Chicago, or most of them fly to Minneapolis.
It's going to be mostly the, what the business community needs, because that's the one that need the, the instant get out of here, not the leisure traveler, a leisure traveler can go wherever, but I, I think the county generally takes the lead on getting this information, um, I just want, he sent it to me, so I gave it to you.
And I guess maybe talk to, like, Bursell, Toro, CCI.
My daughter flies out of here once a month to Boston for business, and average fare is $8.9. And it's, uh...
That's subsidized.
Chris, Chris was, Chris was flying out regularly out of Iron Mountain, actually I had to go to Escanaba because the fares jumped out of Iron Mountain, just like two weeks ago, had to go to California, but had to go to Escanaba because it was too much out of here.
Yeah, I was a little surprised on these prices, like...
This is subsidized price.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think the fares ever averaged $8.9 out of Iron Mountain.
Ever. Well, for a while, it was a lot cheaper flying directly out of here for him work purposes, because he was flying out every few weeks, and then all of a sudden it got huge again, so...
Well, look at it, we got to the next meeting then, because it says the 26th, if you want to provide any feedback.
Pardon?
Uh, fire truck, um, everything's in place for the, uh, October 13th closing.
Bam, bam.
We've got all the paperwork, uh, from the bond council, and, so we'll sit down with UP and close on that loan, and then we'll have a truck in approximately 10 months from that, still 1.5%. Still 1.5%, yeah. Um, and then also, it did come up in public comment, and I had put in here that I was going to put some notes on our civil service, sort of a fact sheet kind of thing for us to have, um, just came up, again, it, it was kind of referred to in public comment, it is fairly complicated, try explaining that, you lose people's attention span, so I tried to come up with a few things that people understand as far as what we face every day with it. Um, what it, what it says it does is section point 7.1 of our, uh, charter, it says it establishes a system providing competitive examination for hiring all employees who set elected or appointing administrative officers. Um, and really, the system is, is antiquated, and never, and never was or no longer is in use by local governments in Michigan. Uh, this is kind of one of my key points, is of all the cities in the upper peninsula, only Iron Mountain is subject to civil service for all hires. Uh, the city of Kingsford is only, the only other city subject to civil service, and that's for their public safety department under, uh, Public Act 78. So, uh, nobody else in the UP is, is using it or needs to use it. Um, uh, one of the things that's come up, and I try to think of some of these things that come up when we talk about it, is that, uh, it's, it's been said that civil service test determines if a candidate is qualified for the job. Uh, that might have been true in 1935, when Michigan Public Act MVA was enacted, but now police and fire candidates are subject to licensing slash certification under state law. Firefighters must achieve a firefighter one and two certification to be employed as a firefighter. This involves, uh, passing a state-issued exam consisting of 100 questions for firefighter one and 100 questions for firefighter two. Police officers must pass a 16-week, 800-hour police academy, along with a reading, writing test, and a physical fitness test as required by Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, which is, uh, known as MCOS. Um, and typically, they have to have at least an associate's degree, if you don't have an associate's degree, you have to be sponsored by the agency, by an agency to go to this academy. So you either have to have, uh, at least an associate's degree with the credits to get into the academy, or you have to have a sponsoring agency to get into the academy. And everybody has to pass an academy, there's no way around that. Um, one other item that always comes up is the belief that the civil service prevents nepotism. Well, first of all, it doesn't prevent nepotism, because if somebody you do pass the test, you could still bring in nepotism. What does prevent nepotism is, after 1985, our charter includes a nepotism prohibition clause, which says, unless the council by an affirmative vote of seven members, which vote shall be recorded as part of the official proceedings, determine the best interest of the city shall be served, the following relatives of any elective, which is all of you, or any appointed office, which is myself, Isaac, the city attorney, the, uh, CFO, uh, potentially get a director of public works is an appointed position, any of those positions, uh, the following relatives, uh, disqualified from holding any appointed office or city employment during the term for which said elective or appointed office was elected or appointed, spouse, child, parent, grandchild, grandparent, brother, sister, half-sister, or the spouse of any of them, so the in-law, in-laws of any one of those relations would be banned, and all relationships including those that arise from adoption. Uh, the, and, and these things kind of lead up to maybe what I'm getting at here, which is what makes it more difficult, is the hiring eligibility lists are established by civil service or valid for two years, and the police and fire department in three years for public works. This limits the city, the city's ability to hire the most qualified candidates by not, by not allowing any new candidates for two or three years respectively. Addition to candidates on the list may take other jobs, leaving the city with limited candidates to hire. The city has incurred overtime due to the fact that the eligibility list had no remaining candidate, candidates available, and had to wait for a new eligibility list, which can take up to eight weeks to establish. By the time you need a, realize you need a new list, which sometimes you have a list that you think is good, and there might be only two people left, you call those two people up, and they say, "I'm not interested, I'm not interested," or one of them takes it and quits a day later. That one was a true story.
We didn't want to mention that, right?
That one was a true story.
Right.
Um, you know, I have to get the commission together, set a test, provide time to advertise for the test, then take the test, then score it, then provide time to potentially maybe interview, so that's where, where it ends up taking about eight weeks. Um, so this really puts us, going back to another point of we're the, one of the only ones in the UP, this puts us at a competitive disadvantage with other upper peninsula cities when hiring new employees, because basically, when you look at, like, in the, in the police side of it, the regional academies out of Northern, is kind of where we get our people from, all these other cities are able to, uh, act when they need somebody, we have to go to a test, or even if, uh, somebody graduates from the, an upcoming academy, they have to wait, we just did our exam, two full years to even get eligible to be hired here. Well, we may know through the grapevine and everything else that they'd be a great candidate, we miss out on them, and they may end up working somewhere else. Um, so, one other point too is, the civil service, part of it, again, back to 1935, when it was initiated, this is Public Act 78, that part of it, I should say that first, that the city civil service, which is in charge of public works, um, doesn't follow this as much, uh, as far as some of these dates I gave out, but it, it provided some job protections, um, such as layoff order and all this stuff in 1935, well, it's so old that collective bargaining hadn't even been really invented yet, we didn't have collective bargaining. In the meantime, since this was put in place, you have collective bargaining, collective bargaining speaks to all those protections that the civil service previously spoke to, and by repealing, um, 7.11 of the civil service, it doesn't change any parts of the collective bargaining agreements, all the protections that are in there, worker protections are still there, um, they have no concerns. So basically, from a hiring standpoint, if we could, uh, repeal this, we would do what everybody else does, and we have a job opening, you go out, take, take resumes, have interviews, and hire the person that's most qualified for positions. We don't do a whole lot of hiring, so it's, it's nice to be able to, when it comes up, get the freshest pool of candidates, qualified candidates available at the time, and not rely on older lists, or have to go out and get tests, and, and even from the testing standpoint, sometimes, um, the, the tests we give don't really speak to job performance, it's more like a general test of knowledge kind of things, and some people, they will find in our DPW, uh, our Department of Public Works especially, they may not be so great at that, but they're probably really good at doing all the jobs that you would have over there, and you may be able to get that out of them in an interview or, uh, with their previous job history. So that's, that's the quick list, I mean, there's others, there's a cost to it, it's not significant, but the tests now go for, was it thirty-six dollars apiece? So we just did a DPW test, there was 25 applicants, 21 showed up, there was $700 in, uh, just tests to see if somebody's qualified, or, uh, can get a 70 on some basic, I don't even know what's on those tests, honestly, but, uh...
Would we be able to create our own one and...
We could, if we wanted to do it, we can, we can do whatever we want to make it.
Make our own, you know, do our own process.
The council would have the ability to set policies, which I would advise we would do, because I don't want to be left responsible for that, but we would come up with hiring policies on, on what we would do with the department.
We can have our own committee to generate however we want it to be.
Exactly, to, to generate, but it gives us far more flexibility, and like I said, trying to get, hire the most qualified candidates each time an, an opening comes up, and not being restricted by, uh, something that really has dated itself fairly badly, and again, back to the example of everybody else in the upper peninsula, you know, Marquette, Escanaba, Houghton, Cladstone.
The people who wouldn't even think that they could qualify for the job may, would be able to even put in for it, that wouldn't think that they might pass a civil service test that actually might, you know, put in for the job, and we'd interview them, and wow, you could probably do a good job.
Well, right, but what I'd still do, obviously, with any ad, is put what the minimum job qualification is, what you would expect based on the description of the position we're hiring for, and that's, you know, something that you can use as a base point of, uh, figuring out who would be qualified, uh, it's, it's...
Instead of basing them on a civil service score.
Right, which, sometimes good, sometimes bad, I mean, we've seen tests where we know the people are halfway, you know, just because it's a small town, you know people, you know what they've done and where they've come from, and they don't do very good on the test, they get no shot at even getting a job.
Or they score great on the test, and it's a good...
Well, the reality is, as related certainly to police and fire, there's no test that you can give them, that they have not, they have not already taken.
Well, especially civil service wise, you can only broadcast those so many times.
Exactly, I mean, you know, they've gone through months of training and testing, uh, you advertise for a, a certified level two firefighter, they've got months and months of hoops to jump through before they've ever come to meet you.
Right.
So it's, it's a, it's a waste of time and money.
Yeah, and what we like to try to do is, the, the department heads of each of our departments knows, based on an interview, who's going to fit. A lot of it comes to personality, which a civil service test is not going to give you the personality as far as how you'll fit in the department, or what maybe changes somebody could bring to the department, and that's what we want to rely on, just like everybody else does in the world, except for here, Kingsford, City.
Well, I think these jobs have jobs, just job descriptions with minimum qualifications and that, so that's a good start, and do we have policies and procedures on how to hire and fire?
The, yeah, the administrative policy manual has it already for, because those were the ones that are not subject to civil service, that already have, there's already a policy on that, so if you didn't have a policy...
Can those be used, too?
Yeah, you just, that, that is the standard policy, that's the backup policy that we use for everybody, unless there's something else that trumps it, so, oh, I shouldn't use that word, sorry, unless there's something else that is better than it.
They do.
So, that's, uh, that's...
That's your language.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I swore. But, uh, yeah, we're, so, there's, there's all these things in place, and it, it, the flexibility and the timeframe is, is one of the big things, is these, you know, two to three years, and that's how long they're valid for, it says right in the act for Public 78, it's valid for two years, unless, if you had five people test, and you hired a couple of them, and the three of them called you up and said, "I'm not interested anymore," Unless, if you had five people test and you hired a couple of them and the three of them called Jeff and said, I'm not interested anymore, then you can do a new test, but if they stayed on there, they're on there. Stuff just to have out there and like, I tried to get together the best I could, if I come up with any better ideas, I'll let you know, but that at least covers it and gives us a starting point.
Just out of curiosity, Jordan.
Bring it up one more time, November, for first meeting in November, bring it up one more time, so if people, when they're here with questions.
Yeah.
Cause then the community will go a little bit more broadly through.
Right, well, that's.
That's gonna be on the ballot, is it not?
It's on the ballot right now and, you know, the absentee voting has already started, so I just wanted to get it at least out there again covered here.
But our first meeting in November.
Is the day before the election.
Okay, I will, I can remember.
Usually is, maybe not this year because it's on the case.
So I remember PD covered by civil services.
The seventh is our first meeting.
Oh, it is, so it is the day before.
Oh, yeah, it would be.
It's not?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Are we gonna publish this, Jordan, in the paper for people to read?
Well, I'll, uh, I'll see what we use for it. I don't believe, I, I did all the fact checking, I could have got all the responses from managers I could, I, I think I got most of all, I, I tried to, some of them, when you get smaller, you really don't see the smaller ones. If I'm wrong, there might be one, but as far as I can tell right now in the upper peninsula, I, all the biggies I checked.
Just without political, it's in that area, I'm just curious.
All the biggies I checked don't use it. Which in the UP, biggies are kind of a small term. It goes from twenty-some thousand down to five really fast within ten cities, I think it is, or. Okay, that's, unless there's any questions.
Anybody anything for Jordan? Are we gonna put together an infrastructure committee on the North Side property?
We can, yeah.
Why don't we do that? Well, we, in fact, the last meeting I think it was, I requested that the North Side property be sent to that community.
Yeah, we can get, I think the last couple of weeks we're concentrated on one issue, so, so we can, we got some time now.
Yeah, let's get that together so we can get something, so we can use that meeting so we can.
Yeah. Nobody got anything else for Jordan?
City match report? Sorry, city attorney, I do it all the time, city attorney report.
I know, I'm just.
Did we even get a letter back from that, that tower?
No, and one was sent on, um, I think another one was sent, that the other was on September ninth.
Okay.
Uh, and that was sent, um, to the, the law firm from Virginia who had sent the termination letter back last November, December.
Was that the one that requested you notify?
Yeah, I believe, I believe.
Was that the other?
Yes, I believe that the, uh, that one, one may have been sent before that, but another one after the last meeting that was had, I sent another one.
Thank you.
We, we got another one that's gonna come up too, just for everybody to have the information, I think that that's the Christian Tower, WPF or something like that. They currently pay three thousand dollars a year for a lease and I guess they're gonna let that one go too, so.
Public comment?
No.
Committee reports, I don't think any committees made today.
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Well, actually, we did, but we had the meeting reference to those committee reports, uh, already. Sorry, guys. And, uh, public comment, anybody like to ask the council at this time? I'm gonna jump up at one time. All right, okay, uh, councilman privilege. Miss Molly?
Doing zigzag today. It's like a tennis match.
Getting dizzy, I know.
Well, imagine how he feels.
Miss Liz?
Um, I would just like to say thank you for having the alley paved that is parallel to Clutcham Street, I had mentioned it a handful of meetings ago. And I was told that it has been remedied and it is wonderful.
We did have.
What, you patched?
Well, not paved, I'm sorry, they told me it was paved and I'm.
Like your language, I'm not.
Yeah, I know, and I'm like, well, I'm pretty sure it wasn't, I, but they said it was paved and I'm like, sweet, but I don't think so, but anyway, whatever was done, they said it's great, so, I'm like, cool. So yes, they, they were very happy with however they fixed it. Leave it at that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Stoll? I just wanna have somebody, I don't know which committee or whatever it is, I don't know, director, Mattson's been working on it, whether we wanna allow four-wheelers and side-by-sides to be able to cross at certain points throughout the.
Yeah, we can take that back out too.
That's not, yeah, because I've been having to go by my house every day.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
They're doing it on their own?
Not more than once, than by one.
Yeah, they have, they have no issue just thinking on that.
We can, yeah, yeah.
They'd be good.
And I did see that they started Kimberly and Madison, I think.
Yeah, the, I, I should have mentioned, I forgot, they started crushing the paving that we're doing this year, um, the, uh, thirteen hundred feet on Kimberly, I think it is, from the apartments to where it's, the end of it was really bad, which is just at the bottom of the hill, the road's not great at all, but that's what we can do this year.
In the corner, right there, in six seconds.
We're gonna probably just put a hot skim over the top of it. Walker, uh, from about the city limit into where about the pines end, which is where Pine Grove meets that first house there if you're on Walker. We did get one alley, the alley behind Bishop Veriga, which if you saw that alley, the amount of traffic and we tried to, uh, turn them into using that alley for pickup and drop-off, so it's more than just like a regular alley kind of thing, uh, but that alley was terrible. And then, uh, Madison, um, from D to A, they'll be doing that too, so. They're crushing today and I think they're gonna be paving by the end of the week, hopefully.
Mr. Ewory?
I have, uh, just a couple of things. And one kind of rolls right into the other, three things. We established a new, uh, public safety committee, if you recall, um, twenty-two, two years ago?
Yeah.
Probably, that's been there. And, uh, in reference to, uh, Mr. Stoll's comment concerning, um, ATV's four-wheeler issue, uh, I'd like to see if we can't contact, uh, Director Mattson. And, uh, he may well have other issues that he'd like to begin conversations on, but I know that Dave has gotten several questions in reference to that. I'd like to see if we can schedule a meeting, uh, for the public safety committee.
Sure.
In addition, uh, again, I'll make a request that we schedule an infrastructure meeting on the North Side property. And also if, uh, I'd like to see if we can't begin some discussions on establishing a neighborhood enterprise zone in that west side area, um, that would encompass Ludwijk Street, Stockbridge, Prospect, that area. As it relates to the, the potential central school project, this would be something that would be easy for us to do. A number of the items necessary are already in place in the North Side Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. We have the right to establish multiple zones in the city and it would bolster their point score. Additional application, something they can use. That leads me to something else. Uh, social media is a powerful, powerful medium to, um, communicate with the public, I think we all know it, we all, most of us have social media. And I had the distinct displeasure, which I found a number of other members of this council have, of reading an article posted to social media by District Three County Commissioner Barbara Kramer in reference to, um, her displeasure with the action that this council took concerning the pilot involved in the central school projects. Now, I am one of a number of council people who attended any meeting that we were invited to in the end to discuss the needed pilot and ultimately in the end, a two-hour meeting with Councilman Blumquist and I and the developer discussing the formula in which that pilot was set. Now, if you read the article that was published by Commissioner Kramer, you would have sworn to God that she must have been sitting right in our lap through every one of these meetings, even though I know she was not present at any one. Not one, not for a minute, not for a second. But if you let, listen to the, or read the bladder that she chose to write on social media and whipped the community into a ladder with information that at best, at best, couldn't be more wrong. I would just like to say how disappointed I am and how enlightening it is, I might add, that an elected official would take an issue as important and as long-lasting as this central school sale and the entire development will be to this community. And without the proper information at hand to make that decision, would choose, based upon her article, to vote on the issue without it. I just find it amazing how that woman would feel that it is within her right or that it is the proper way to represent taxpayers by writing that, I don't know what you call it, I've never read anything like that, based upon so much ignorance of facts. I would ask Henry Wender, who is the chairman of the Dickinson County Board of Commissioners, to rein in his wild horse, because the truth is, she's not representing anyone with that kind of foolishness. That's all I got to say. I got a lot more to say, but.
Maybe I'll cover some of it for you.
No, I don't think that would be the best interest for you. But I, I do know how I feel and I know that there are others in this community that feel similar. That's all I got to say.
You mean, I will say this, Bill, is that I agree with you completely and from what I read.
It doesn't sound like she was at the meeting on Wednesday either.
No. No. No, you are absolutely right, I've never, I had to read it three times, no, literally, I had to read it three times. And I'm, my first thought was, no, somebody has, somebody has had to have hacked your account. Because nobody would do this on purpose. No one would, would just purge lies like that as an elected official, but I guess I was wrong. I'm done.
All right, and maybe it isn't, but, and Bill tried to correct it on there, you know, and I had also corrected it on there, right? And basically, um, I'll tell you what I wrote, it's a quick, it's just a quick one. In the words of the developer, "The process is normally a four to six month, four to six months, the project only started two months ago to try to fit the school board's timeline to meet their deficit elimination plan and due to that fact, relevant information was getting to us right up to the vote." Uh, including not all the relevant information we needed at the time to try to an attempt to vote on this. And that is why it was tabled to allow more time to get all the facts together to make an informed decision that represents the taxpayers and in the best interest of the school district. We as a council do not make quick decisions when it comes to, uh, decisions that would affect taxpayers for many years to come. I wrote that in there and I, I can, yeah, it was like two seconds and his was deleted, mine was deleted and now we're both blocked from commenting on, on all the different other stuff that's on there. And she was telling them they're gonna save all this money in taxes, uh, couldn't comment back stating it's only five dollars, six dollars for a whole five years, so.
And you know, I gotta tell you, I mean, this is, we're all elected officials here. And our job is hard enough, I mean, it's, it's difficult to, to represent the people that you represent and know in your heart that you're doing always the right thing. But it sure doesn't help when you have somebody out there, there's no difference between what I read as it relates to this council concerning that meeting and a sniper in the woods. I mean, apparently you can take any free shots you'd like and you don't need any of the truth to do it. It's a shame.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support it. All in favor, can you put aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?